Let's move into items of business, the first of which this evening is the second and final meeting ordinance number 23 dash 2022 is an ordinance authorizing disclosure of an alley in the city of Greer, authorizing the mayor to execute the deed containing any and all interest in the alley. We have a public hearing this evening in that regard. Any additional information, Mr. Mayor?
No, sir, there's not.
With that, I will entertain a motion to receive. It's over.
Say.
And a second. The floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Item two is the approval of the design partnering services for renovation of Greer Golf Complex. Again, Mr. John Kugelhauer joins us for that discussion as well.
Thank you, sir. It's my understanding that we don't, even though we don't have a guaranteed maximum price for these renovations, they're going to be taking place at Greer Golf. The staff does often ask for council to approve on our professional services. And Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Cunningham thought that this was an appropriate case in this case. So we've been working with SGA and MRR to do the design. And they also sat in with us to give an interview for three qualified construction firms. They came in last week. We sat down and listened to their qualifications. And the choice was unanimous. We decided to go with a company called Prescott and Fouchet Construction. And that was, like I said, a unanimous decision upon the eight-member panel that sat through those interviews. And so we're asking council to approve our selection.
Council, the recommendation for staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So, and a second.
Say.
The floor is open for discussion. So, what are the numbers? I mean, we don't need to see the numbers.
Well, we don't have any numbers, yes, sir. We're still in a design phase, and we didn't have the total guaranteed maximum price. But we did ask them to give us some idea of what they would be thinking in terms of percentage, a percentage of that guaranteed maximum price. So that did factor into our choice with that group. They were lower than the other groups that we interviewed as far as their, what their quote would be based on that percentage of guaranteed maximum price.
Others? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Item two is the approval of the design partnering services for renovation of Greer Golf Complex. Again, Mr. John Kugelhauer joins us for that discussion as well.
Thank you, sir. It's my understanding that we don't, even though we don't have a guaranteed maximum price for these renovations, they're going to be taking place at Greer Golf. The staff does often ask for council to approve on our professional services. And Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Cunningham thought that this was an appropriate case in this case. So we've been working with SGA and MRR to do the design. And they also sat in with us to give an interview for three qualified construction firms. They came in last week. We sat down and listened to their qualifications. And the choice was unanimous. We decided to go with a company called Prescott and Fouchet Construction. And that was, like I said, a unanimous decision upon the eight-member panel that sat through those interviews. And it's, so we're asking council to approve our selection.
Council, the recommendation for staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So, and a second.
Say.
The floor is open for discussion. So, what are the numbers? I mean, we don't need to see the numbers.
Well, we don't have any numbers, yes, sir. We're still in a design phase, and we didn't have the total guaranteed maximum price. But we did ask them to give us some idea of what they would be thinking in terms of percentage, a percentage of that guaranteed maximum price. So that did factor into our choice with that group. They were lower than the other groups that we interviewed as far as their, what their quote would be based on that percentage of guaranteed maximum price.
Others? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Are they what?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to the third item before this this evening. This is the first reading of ordinance number 25 dash 2022. This is the city of Greer budget ordinance fiscal year 2022, 23, and ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the city of Greer South Carolina, making appropriations there for living taxes and to provide for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, we supplied you with a covered letter for the budget and a copy of the budget. You've got a chance to review that. Mr. Mayor, the floor is here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one thing I wanted to bring up is by way of reminder that when we went through the budget workshop now, it's been two weeks ago tonight, we outlined the budget in that workshop process, just the major initiatives this year. They're reflected in this budget. And the only thing that I would like to say that we have had to address between that time and now is involves our fee schedule specific to paying our officers for private rentals. I think the number that was in the budget, what is it, David? It was?
As written, it's 45.
And it's 45. We're going to change it. It's 45 with benefits. But that's a pass-along cost that the renter ends up paying anyway, but it needs to be reflected accurately. So the cleaned-up budget with any other amendments that may be offered tonight will show that change on the fee schedule.
Lowering that?
Yes. Where it's to be more, to be accurate, because what you've got in there is that $45 fee plus benefits on there, whereas before we had 55.
Council, for the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive 25 dash 22.
So, and a second.
The floor is open for discussion.
The big thing, I brought it up in our workshop, is the increase is not in mileage, but the fees. And not fees we charge for events, but the trash fee and stormwater fee. The trash fee, I understand that's based on, you know, actual costs. Our stormwater fee, it's a, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 25% increase just on the residential, when you look at the, we're adding $5 to that fee.
We're adding $5 to, yeah, an equivalent residential unit.
So, now that's for residences, but the residents aren't the only ones who pay that. You've got commercial and industrial folks who pay that. And that, to me, seems like a pretty significant hit in one year. I mean, is it, does it equate out the 25% increase on stormwater fee for everyone across the board?
Yeah, this is, this is specific to a $5 increase per equivalent residential unit. So to keep the math simple, if you've got a business that equates to four ERUs, equivalent residential units, you're going to see a $20 increase in your stormwater fee. So we'll go from $100 to $120.
Right. And even tonight, we talked about having, I think the cash balance was $2 million, to Many things have changed over the last years, but one of the things that we have always said that we needed to do was map our stormwater inventory. That has yet to be done. So I don't know, I don't, it does not sound like to me that we're being very wise with those dollars, that we should drastically reduce or even cut that fee increase out for this year. And it would seem to me that, I don't know how much the map a system would cost, but it can't be $2 million. And then we know what we've got and which way we need to proceed.
So I guess, I guess my opinion would be slightly different inasmuch as the percentage is, is the percentage, but it is basically below because we're starting with a $20 fee per unit. And so I think that's relative in some regard. But I guess my, I guess my feeling would be that part of the reason that we may not have mapped it in the past is the abundance of projects that we've got in the hopper or have not been able to do because we haven't had the money. And the other thing is, just like the garbage fee, we know that our costs in that regard are not ever going to go down. And the further we push this down the road, the further we get behind. And while I would like to think that just dipping into reserve fund would be the way to solve this for another year or two, we all know that, just like the garbage fee, which is, which is now going to show a deficit of $400,000 is where we're going to wind up with on stormwater fee if we don't make some sort of adjustment over time. And so while there's never a good time to do it, I would support doing it in this, in this particular budget.
And I understand the logic behind that, and I do not disagree with you that we need to bring our stormwater system. We need to be, we need to be able to respond to emergencies, but we also need to be able to upgrade. We've got to know what we've got. But all along, since we've been saying we need to map our system, I don't think that we've never had a zero balance in our account. We've always had for the last two or three years. And David, please correct me, but have not we had a balance that's exceeding $1 million in that?
I'll retain the bridge, yes, sir.
Okay.
But typically, it's there for a project of some kind. I mean, that's where we have to say to do those projects.
No, I agree. And I think one of the projects is mapping. We haven't even done that. And I would, and another thing that's weighing on me about this is, is the inflation overall. We've got 8%, 9% inflation overall, and we're going to add to a business, you know, more. And I don't know how much it's going to be because it's based on how big your building is in the ERUs. But that's my feeling about it. I find it very hard to support this year.
Others? If from the beginning, we were typically much lower than other entities, are we still in that position?
Mr. Bettis, in comparing 18 cities that we typically benchmark against, three of which don't even have a stormwater fee, we are the lowest. The next three lowest would be Simpsonville, Malden, easily, easily charging $28 per ERU. The next one would be Sumter at 30, and then it increases between Sumter and Bluffton at $115. So, you know, we, Simpsonville, according to the latest data that we've got, is 65 cents higher. So that would be the closest that we've got from comparison standpoint. And just to be clear, Mr. Erwood, that's a valid point about the mapping part of it, but we are engaged now to begin the mapping and cameraing process, which we know will take at least this fiscal year to begin doing the basin that we're targeting now. So, and then a substantial portion of that fund balance that you mentioned is programmed in this year's budget to be used.
How much is the projected increase for these ERUs? If we broke it down on the residential side and then also how, how it's broken out for others who stop paying one ERU, they're paying several?
It would still, the $5 increase would be on the ERU regardless of the pervious surface.
No, I understand that you're going to have 20% more. 20% more than that.
Yeah, so whatever it is now, we know, oh, the projected overall revenue, yes, sir, would just be 20% more plus whatever new, new projects come online this fiscal year and beyond.
My only thoughts about the budget is, and thank you, staff, for working on it so hard and pulling it together. But a lot of these fee increases affect my community, you know, substantially, especially with property ownership being low and a high rental, you know, percentage. So with that being said, you know, I'm kind of torn between, because if we increase the fees, folks on fixed income, you know, it's going to be harder for them to afford their yearly taxes. And then, in essence, you're driving up rental costs because they'll just pass that along to the renter. If I decide to support this tonight, I'm definitely going to be actively looking for opportunities to, to either better educate community folks and, you know, bring about programs for the underserved and underutilized, to get them educated so they can get their incomes higher and find programs that we can help them afford a lot of these fees in the future.
I would say that all our folks are going to be affected. You know, this doesn't go without notice regardless. And, you know, there's, there's always the argument, of course, that those landlords are going to pass it along, and without doubt, many of them, many of them would. You know, I would also suggest that, that some of the areas that you represent are in much more need of having these funds applied to their area than some of the others in the city as well, too. And so it may be an opportunity for you to have work done in that area to address needs that may not get addressed otherwise if we're not prudent about keeping that budget fully funded, so.
Absolutely.
Has we constructed the new fees, the changed fees, that were, are we always checking our competition, so to speak, and see where we stand?
Your deputy administrator, Mr. Sell, has actually got his finger on the pulse of that most of the time, and it's actually one of his favorite things to do, to be honest with you. He's, he's very often, no, well, yeah, he likes his bar graphs. As a matter of fact, I was using that bar graph to discuss the stormwater fee, but yes, sir, we do constantly benchmark. But it's not just in these things, but it's in the other fees that we would apply to, everything from Parks and Recreation to Building and Development Services. Where do we stand on all of that stuff is constantly benchmarked by our folks.
I think, I think there's an argument to be made as well, too. I mean, if you look at our community, at the, in the services that are, that are offered, you know, there's a reason that we're growing at the rate that we're growing. And, and part of it is certainly value. I think that's, that's a key component. But I think one of the things that we have to be cognizant about is the fact that, much like we've talked about impact fees, and we've talked about development agreements and other ways of offsetting growth, this actually could be a tool to help us do that because one of the things that we know is going to continue to happen on a, on a scaled basis is going to be the number of homes that we're going to add every year. And, you know, there for a while, we went from 1,000 to 1,200 to 1,300 to 1,400. It's, you know, it's calmed down a little bit, but just according to the paper today, our, you know, our median home price now is over $200,000. And it's, it's still of value in this, in this area. And I don't know many people that have moved to a different community, you know, based on a stormwater fee or, you know, some of the other fees that are involved, for the most part. Our taxes are still relative, and I think they're still, still fair.
Two things. One is a question. I know the last year we raised mileage, and we raised, did we, go ahead and raise the garbage fee then?
And, yeah, the garbage fee was not raised by an action of council. The garbage fee was raised last year by virtue of the contract and the annual increase that was adopted in the contract.
And stormwater?
Stormwater is not raised, no, sir.
My objection to this increase is not that I am anti-stormwater because I remember when the drought started happening in Greer many, many years ago. And when there would be a rain, you would drive across the bridge, and they would be red with mud. And we don't have that anymore, which is, which is a great thing. I guess my objection is that 20% is 20%. That's significant. And I've said the rest.
Others? Other areas of concern or questions or information that staff can provide?
One item in the budget I was curious about was the Greer Heritage Museum. Can you tell us a little more about the agreement there? And I know they're only open, but, you know, so often, just curious, you know, how that works.
The Greer Heritage Museum is volunteer-run. We have in the past, and I don't think we have this year, have we? But we've utilized some of our event staff to help cover those, those days. But beyond, beyond that, we maintain the building. It's still ours. Many major issues that go on will be our responsibility.
So, so does that money go towards their operating costs or does it go to maintenance?
How are we utilizing that, David?
When you provide them, when they use labor, then we provide labor, then the $5.
The $5, yeah. Is that?
Or operating whatever.
Yeah.
Now, is that something they petition for or do we have to automatically, do we just automatically?
We put it in the budget. They, they don't ask for it.
They're doing a really good job. If you go back to the beginning, they, they've got a lot of stuff online now. But I would like to see them more interactive with the city itself, maybe some special projects.
Okay.
I know there are a couple of things in the works in that regard. They've, they've done a magnificent job with, under some new leadership of getting that thing back up and going again. And we're going to make some changes to the interior, I think, as real asset in the city.
Others? Folks, it's 300 pages, about to be a question or two.
Did we make adjustments? We talked about, it wouldn't, it wouldn't adjust the bottom lines, but the city resident versus non-city resident for, I believe, one of the questions was green fees, memberships at the golf course, that kind of thing.
It would, it would have a minor adjustment probably on the bottom line, but that would be a projection we would have to make if, if council was so inclined to, to make a change to those green fees, specific to resident or non-resident. And of course, it would be reflected in the budget, but.
My, my point of view is that without the residents, the non-residents would not have the opportunity to enjoy Greer Golf now. And I, I think that's one way we can show the citizens appreciation by giving, you know, just a couple of dollars off.
Ms. Cunningham, would you care to reply to that? I know you've done some research in that regard. Do you want to come to the front here and address that?
I actually have.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't see him sitting back there. Sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I saw your bodyguard sitting behind you back there, but I didn't see him beside you back there.
Uh, thank you, sir. What, I'm sorry, Mr. Roy, what's your specific question?
I believe in the, the fees that's going to be charged, there was a, either the fees were equal for resident versus non-resident. And my opinion and preference is that we show appreciation to our citizens by giving them a discounted rate, even if you have to increase, for instance, if it's a $4 difference, you know, add that to the non-resident because the residents were the one who made this happen.
Right. So we, we did leave in the resident, non-resident rate for memberships and left those fees where they are right now as an incentive to residents to purchase a membership, but also to try to increase our membership. The reason that we went to a consolidated fee, A, it makes it easier for us to see where we are when we compare against other golf courses. B, one of the complaints that we get from the public is that it's confusing when they're visiting our website or trying to book a tee time. A lot of people probably don't realize what resident, non-resident means until they call the pro shop, and a lot simply won't do it. We ran the numbers to see what the rate of play is. It's just under 65% non-resident, about 30, 35% or so resident. There's also a lot to do with the taxes. Each green fee, each cart fee is charged a, I think cart fees are charged sales tax, greens fees are charged admission tax. And so with both of those fees in there, it's just more buttons to push, more, more things to try to calculate at the end of the day and at the end of the year from an accounting standpoint. But from staff at the golf course, is, just to make it more simple, easier for us to make comparative pricing and what we're seeing, how we stand, especially judging with the amount of renovations we've made to the course over the past couple of years.
And I believe that's what David said during our, one of our workshops, talking about that. But, so what you're saying is, we don't want to, we don't want to give a discount to our residents because it's kind of a burden on staff.
Not necessarily, no, sir. We're just looking for a way to operate as efficient as possible. We are certainly cognizant and very appreciative of the efforts by, by this body and our residents that have made Greer Golf possible. I absolutely agree with that. This is just something that when we looked at how we compare our rates to others, we don't have any other municipal courses in the upstate to really compare resident versus non-resident pricing to. So when we're seeing where we stand compared to the other courses in the upstate, what is our benchmark? Is it the resident rate that we're comparing? Is it the non-resident rate that we're comparing?
So we've got a member and non-member, and there's no change in that, in that membership rate?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So when they come in, they either got a, they've got a card that they're a member or, or not. At that point, then, we, we have resident or non-resident. How do we determine that? I mean.
For people to walk in?
Yeah, just walk in.
We, I mean, we ask, we, we ask to see their license or proof when we can. Of course, on Saturday mornings, when there's 25 people in there and we're trying to get them out to the tee box in time, sometimes we have to take their word for it. So we verify when we can, but it's the same operation that we have in our office for Parks and Recreation also. We can, and I guess to go further, we can look up residency. We have the GIS program installed on the computers at the pro shop where they can just type up address and look it up.
Mr. Watson, do you think there's other ways to incentivize, you know, to say, give that nod, to say thank you to the residents that way? I, I get what Mr. Erwood's saying, you know, when our sons played, you know, one of the youth programs, you know, where it's, I think, it used to be, probably still is, the $10 difference in some of the registration fees. You know, that's not necessarily a make or break for our family with one child, maybe, you know, several children, that's a bigger deal even. But it does say thank you to residents, for sure, as taxpayers that way. Do you think there's, but I also get the logistics that you're, you're speaking to as well. It's a little bit different, kind of in real time, trying to sort all that out. Do you think there's any other ways to, lack of better word, give a perk or?
Right. We certainly have other options, like renting the dining room. Right. We certainly have other options, like renting the dining room or renting the, after we complete the upcoming renovation, the outdoor rental space that we think will be very popular. It should also be able to accommodate weddings. So, there are other fees in there that maybe are not as meticulous and recurring as what we see with like greens fees and, and cart fees that we, we would certainly be happy to provide resident and non-resident pricing for those. But we'll be happy to provide whatever council wishes. This was just our proposal for the upcoming budget.
Well, the, the price differential is so minimal for rounds of golf between resident, non-resident, I think that's going to make a difference. And from what you said, the ultimate success is probably going to depend on non-residents and coming back time after time. I think just having a differential for golf membership for resident, non-resident is the most important. That's, that's pretty significant, although it's not a big difference. I think that's a good, my question. Can't value resident, non-resident for other like sports. I think it's a pretty good combination overall.
Had you all looked into the option of, because I don't know how many rent golf cards given up incentive for city, you know, career citizens, either a half price on a golf card or free golf card?
Currently, our fee schedule does have a resident golf card rate and a non-resident golf card rate. Was that your question?
Well, I was saying, instead of, you know, either we rework it to where if you're a resident, you get a free golf card or half price golf card. If you're not, you know, you pay the full, full amount.
Right. The discount that we have, that we've practiced so far has not been that, like a 50% or full. That reason being is because we rent the golf carts and they cost about $60,000 a year, I think. That's off the top of my head. But so, we have to recapture that in order to be able to make that payment each year. So, we haven't extended that percentage to like 50% or free. But that's, but there currently is a difference between resident and non-resident.
You know, I may jump in, Mr. Mayor. The, I think it's important to remember that the, the golf course is fairly new to the city and the, the operation of the golf course is, is very new. And the city did take on debt in, in purchasing this course. Furthermore, we've taken on debt in renovating all the fairways, working on the cart paths, and now what we're doing with, with the clubhouse and the surrounding grounds. And so, we really do, from a staff perspective, believe that treating this like an enterprise fund as close to a business as we possibly can is paramount, not only to making us whole from what the taxpayers have put into this, but also making sure that the golf course is sustainable. So, when we talk about benchmarking where we are with other municipal golf courses, every one of these things that we're suggesting to you are not outside of the pale of what's normal. But it also puts us in a position where we can reasonably get whole as quick as possible. If you'll recall, we had a five-year pro forma that had us building that up. That probably, that five-year pro forma did not at any time anticipate the impacts of COVID. So, that pushed it off a little bit. We've also pushed it off a little bit more with the investments we're making in the clubhouse. So, while I appreciate and recognize this, this intent to reward the taxpayers for their investment, which we're all beneficial, we all benefit from, let's not forget from my perspective that I need to get that thing in the black as quick as possible without burdening anyone.
I understand that. And if you want to treat it like an enterprise fund or like a business, you sure wouldn't ask your, you wouldn't ask your investors to invest without a reward. So, in my opinion, our citizens, our taxpayers are the investors. They put forth the dollars to do this project and they just need to be rewarded.
We're trying to drive membership. Having a, a difference in the membership rate for the resident versus non-resident might encourage people to become members as opposed to, you know, just, just playing every now and then. How much is the projected revenue off memberships?
For the upcoming year?
Yes.
Give me just one moment.
I can tell you right now. 215,000.
Yeah, 215,000. I'm sorry.
No, that's from memberships.
That was the membership revenue?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Membership. Okay. And green fees, what are we projecting then?
230,000. I, I would like to note in that.
I don't know the exact number, but we're, we're near close on an enterprise fund on that operation.
In that 215,000 for member dues, I think Mr. Mayorman referenced at the, at the budget workshop that we had made an agreement with the neighborhood across the street to purchase one. So, there's about, I'm just going, $90,000 to $100,000 in that number built in for that one-time membership that they will purchase. So, had we not have received that, the, the membership number would probably be 125 or somewhere around there.
We budgeted 175 last year for membership.
Because of COVID, how many years did we back up on our pro forma?
Yeah, I, I think that's probably a conservative estimate. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, so now we're doing more renovations and so we've lost time on the pro forma again?
I would say that in that two years, we probably built in the loss, when we, when we did the renovations on the front nine and the back nine, we lost time with that. So, I would, overall, I think I would hazard a guess and say two years, probably a little conservative, but reasonable.
So, as council, when we made that decision to purchase, we made, we made the, we all agreed that it was all going to be for recreation. But if we did not, if, if, if this did not, this course did not become self-sustaining dollar-wise within five years, then all bets are off. That it would just remain some kind of recreation. We're, we're not, do you believe we're headed down that path that we're going to be?
I believe we are. Yes, sir. I think with the investments that we're making and the other investments, not only in the golf course, but in everything surrounding it, I absolutely do believe that we will be at a bare minimum revenue neutral in, in, in some fair short order. But it's, this to me has been surprising. It has been, I was hesitant when I first got here about, is this something that's long-term viability? There's not a lot of municipal courses. If I can be honest with you, I think our Parks and Rec staff has really thrown all of their weight behind it. I think council has done the right thing in funding the renovations on the fairways, the work on the cart path. And I think that moving towards renovation of this clubhouse and turning it not only into a renovated clubhouse and a community asset, but another event space with the plans that are out there, I absolutely believe that this is a wise investment that we need to continue making. But until that time, when we're in the black, I think we need to operate it as close to that zero level as possible and get there as quick as possible. I don't feel like, and I, and I challenged Anne and Red, and I'll be honest with you, the, the increases that you see today in the golf course fees were my recommendation. I asked them, they, they were very conservative. I said, go back and double check because if there's room to move this up, let's do it. And they did come back and they made, they did a little bit more homework and they felt confident. And I certainly feel confident in the fee structure we've presented to you today.
The one thing that we've got to remember now is that we're, that we've positioned ourselves wisely, that for whatever potential changes happen with the golf course, we've still got assembled land that now represents the largest park in Greenville County easily and maybe in the entire upstate.
I agree.
We've got a gem out there regardless of which way we want to go.
We've got that plan and we've got to keep kicking the can down the road, so to speak, that we, you know, say, okay, we've got two more years to hit this mark.
We're there. Council, this is the first reading. Other questions or comments that you might have this evening?
I got a few more. On the, not the, the labor anymore, but just to ask the question of, do you think it's worth our time to continue looking for these partnerships with subdivisions and offering, not necessarily partnership, but you know, telling them about that opportunity for memberships?
Yeah, I think in, in this case, and 100% of the credit goes to Red on this one, to go out and, and, and take the initiative to reach out to the developer across the way because they could walk to the golf course. And that made, that just makes sense. And with the investment that we're making out there, the restaurant offerings and everything else, that made, that makes a lot of sense. As far as it being an incentive or something that we would offer to other developers or to other properties, we can consider that on a case-by-case basis. I think proximity in this particular case made the big difference.
I'm glad here was included in the, what they call this card, now that you can buy one card and get multiple courses, get rounds on multiple courses. I hear frequently, so let's pick a lot of it up. I think the other exciting thing is the potential for collaborative efforts out there now. Y'all have done a wonderful job with the renovations out there and they are coming into their home. We're getting more and more rounds out there and now we're starting to get recognized by tournaments and other organizations. And I think we're going to have the opportunity down the road to do some pretty unique stuff out there.
One item in the budget I was looking at was travel expenses. Is that from year to year typically in line for what we usually spend for each department?
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, I, you're going to see an increase in those, especially where we have departments where you've got folks with, that need professional certifications, continuing education credits, et cetera. As we grow as an organization, that's going to automatically grow with it. But yes, sir, that's, that's typically, we, those same folks go to the same level of courses or CEUs that they need to get from place to place. So, we keep an eye on those things as well.
We're fortunate as well to have a number of people in our organization that represent us on a statewide basis as well, too. I know that David has represented us on some occasions. I'm not sure about Susan, but others in the, in the financial department and then the clerks department and Ms. Duncan and the others, particularly on our, our court staff and recreation staff. I guess everybody, every police department, fire department.
Josh is the incoming president of the Fire Chiefs Association this year.
That puts an extra burden on him to travel as well, too. So, yeah, that's, that's one thing we definitely keep an eye on, but is valuable to us in terms of some additional training and exposure. Council, this is the first reading of ordinance number 25-2022. We have had debate, discussion and questions. I'll ask again, questions in regards to the ordinance? Comments? Additional comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Irwood?
For this first reading, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Let's move on to the fourth item this evening. That will be the first reading of ordinance number 26-2022. This is an ordinance to amend ordinance 2-36 of the Civil Reure Code of Ordinances. Mr. Mayorman?
Yes, sir. From time to time, it's necessary to adjust a number of things throughout the budget. In this particular case, the compensation for our, our city council has not been addressed in at least six years, if not a little longer. Staff is making a recommendation in this ordinance to make proportionate changes that reflect inflation over that time period for council. And this, the dollar amounts of approved are reflected in this year's budget. And I.
Guided by state law. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I will say this, that it is guided by state law. And what's important to note in this is that it will take effect at the next sitting council. So, this would become effective January of 2024.
Thank you, sir. Entertainment received. For the purpose of discussion. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. You said, how long since this evening?
If I'm not mistaken, I'm going to look at David here, but it's been six years.
How were the, the actual changes themselves, the numbers? How did we come up with those?
Looking at the compensation for varying cities around us, Greenville, and, you know, Malden Sensibility, it gets us in line with some of those cities.
So, regionally, we looked, obviously, there's been growth in that six-year time period as well. Did we look at comparable, does comparable size city or size budget? Do we use any of those criteria at all either?
I didn't look at those specifically. We're really just looking at the region.
Gotcha.
Discussion? Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Irwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, let's move to the last item of business this evening, which is the first and final reading of Resolution 12-2022. This is consideration of a proposed road closure of a portion of Parker Street. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the ongoing Greer Mill project, this is, this is just part of the discussion to begin the process of potentially closing Parker Street via ordinance. But there are two things I'd like to point out that the city attorney pointed out to me this afternoon. The first of which is, if you'll see into one of these whereas clauses, Greer Commission Public Works and Duke Energy did not respond to the letter asking if there is anything in the right of way. In this particular case, CPW did inform us this afternoon that they do have a line in that section of Parker Street right of way, which would need to maintain some public access to it. So, a right of, a right of way would need to remain in place. The second thing is under section two, where it references that the conveyance of this portion of Parker Street Greer Mill, if any, be contingent upon the value of said property. My, my request for someone on council tonight is that they would make a motion, if council's so inclined to approve this resolution, striking section two in its entirety. Long story short, there's a, there's a line in the road. We've got to make sure we, we've got access to. And this references specifically a conveyance of the property for value. My intent is to maintain it as a public asset, not to sell it. The intent is for parking. And if at the end of the day, we end up putting public parking out there, that would be my recommendation, is that we maintain it for public parking, especially with what we anticipate to happen at, with, with this particular project. And then, of course, the investments we're making in Turner, Little Turner and Big Turner in, in that area. So, I think if we are to shut down Parker, that section of Parker Street, which I think is probably a reasonable thing to do, keeping it as a public asset is a necessity. Yeah. It's in the right of way. This is a different parcel. Actually, this is three different parcels. So, there's the, there's the parking place up there in the corner behind the church. And then what you've got is the, the road itself would be conveyed as part of this and, and closed between, what's the name of that street? That south, is that Dawes? I think it's Dawes, between Dawes and, we just talked about it, what's Connecticut? I think that's Stewart. That's right. That section is going to be closed. And then that would just be redesigned as a parking, a public parking area. So, yes, sir, there is parking there, but we would, this would increase the parking.
But it would do away with the, with public access between Pennsylvania and Stewart.
As a road. Yes, sir. What this, this resolution starts the public hearing process. So, we, this doesn't close. this doesn't close the road. Oh, the ordinances would do that and that would be part of that ongoing discussion.
Well, I have a whole different outlook on it.
Okay.
I think this is a great opportunity if they want to foot the bill to straighten out that street instead of closing it. It's a, it's a pretty windy, strange little street. Um, and it could be, there's very few ways to access all the way down to Galvin Street already. Uh, CPW wanted us to close one of them several years ago. And that's the reason we did is because people have trouble getting in and out there now. And this road right here will take you at least within a block of Point City Street if you follow it. Yeah, I'd rather see us improve it than close it.
Well, I think that, we also have, it's not going to show on the survey. Uh, well, first of all, isn't there overhead, some high voltage transmission lines overhead down there?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And there also is an old right of way. It was, it was actually a railroad spur. Um, and I know this because I helped one of our citizens with a, with an issue down here as far as, um, um, it, it'd become overgrown. And it was, uh, I, I think we inherited it based on what I was told. I mean, is it going to? I don't know. Is it going to affect that? Because we have to get in there and maintain. It was all grown up with cane at this particular time. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I haven't followed. Yes, no, sir.
Okay. Well, it would be right there, uh-
It's down at the point.
Yes.
Down at the southern point of that property, there's a huge power pump-
Mm-hmm.
With some heavy duty stuff on it. And there's also a fire hydrant.
And then that, that's where the, you also had the rail line that came in there.
Move the rail line. Yes, sir.
Well, and I think that that, that the rail line is part of the issue with, we'd kind of forgotten about it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
This, you know, I, to, to your point, Mr. Bettis, I understand that straightening the road makes some transportation sense, but for the development of the property, the parking is going to be a necessity. And so that's why-
They won't have enough place to put parking on this property.
As part of that larger development, they're going to probably, likely be required for, to have extra parking.
I can tell you right now, I'm not entirely proposing that.
Well, just by way of reminder, the resolution itself just begins the process and it does not close the road. Okay.
I'd be glad to strike every bit of the four sections.
Okay.
I don't think we've got any skin near that long.
Damn it.
Mr. Mr. Grant, do you, do you know any of the history about how the parking lot became?
The, you're talking about the existing parking lot that's beside, on the corner of Stewart? And, uh, that's actually relatively new.
Yeah, it hadn't been that terribly many years ago.
Right. Well, that, that was a city.
Why did we do it? I don't even remember.
I don't know, but it was done, it's got retention on it, water retention, and the city put in landscaping on it.
I might be incorrect, but I believe that it was done when, um, after Greer, Greer Mill, um, was winding down and there was an investment day.
That's right.
Who was the CDS?
Yes.
That came in.
Right.
That part of it coming in was R of reading, that part of the law into our inventory.
Yes.
Church wasn't allowing them to use their parking lot. That's why.
It's pretty bad. I'm getting the video. But I believe that's the case.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think, I think they make someone to tell me that.
Yeah. Because at one time, all the, the loading docks were down on that end, were they not? You know, they're, they're, it still shows where the loading docks were there. Well, that's, well, I guess at one time of operations, that's a lot of the, your raw goods came in there and the other end was finished goods going out.
With the warehouse, yeah.
Yes.
Finished goods, yeah. Others?
Did they look at the option of trying to straighten it out?
I don't know if they did. I, I've looked at the site. No, sir. Well, from an engineering standpoint, from the developer side, I don't know the answer to that. I know the park- Yeah, it's a city one. But, but as part of the ongoing discussion, the overall development of the site, I don't know the answer to that. I think the parking has always been the intent there.
So how would that look from a developer, city standpoint, if we moved and re-straightened that out?
The requirement under this particular, i- if we go down this road, the, the developer would bear all the cost in construction and engineering and everything else. It would just remain a public asset.
And we still have to have like a public hearing? Cause I'm looking at the house on the corner there. We have to shift that road. I mean, that, that get, still get kind of funky, but, okay.
All right. First and final reading of resolution twelve dash twenty-two, consideration of roads, road closure for a portion of Parker Street. Any further comments, questions or discussion in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
We don't have a motion.
If I can get someone to make a motion to, to strike section two?
I'll entertain a, let's see, who made the motion?
We don't have a motion.
That's my fault. I'll entertain a motion to receiving ordinance number twenty-three dash, no, wrong one.
Resolution twelve dash twenty-two.
I've got the map pulled up here, so, uh, I'll entertain, uh, the first reading of resolution twelve dash twenty-two, consideration of the proposed road closure of a portion of Parker Street, striking section two. Do I hear a motion? Or does that need to be added by a motion?
I think in this particular case, you would, you would, the motion would be for the, for the complete resolution number two, and then I would ask that someone amend it striking two.
Okay. All right. We'll go back and redo it this way. I'll entertain a motion to receive first and final reading of resolution twelve dash twenty-two.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
At that, at this point, then I will, um, ask that, um, you make a motion, Mr. Hopper, to, um, consider the proposed road closure of Parker Street, striking, amended to say striking section number two.
So moved.
And you'll, you'd a second. All right. Now we're at that point that we can do. Are we clear?
Yes, sir.
On that, I think I've taken it all around the world on that one. What we are considering is the closure of the proposed road of a portion of Parker Street, striking section number two.
One question. Uh, when, if everything was approved, when would that road be closed?
Uh, as, well, it would be a closed effective the second reading. But this, but this, again, this, this just triggers the process, so.
But it would be closed prior to the development of the site?
Oh, I don't have a time. No, sir. I don't know the answer to that. I would, it would, it would effectively be closed when y'all close it. Now, as a public access point, um, we would probably need to close it immediately. But I think part of this, the, the, the request from the developer is as we start this resolution process and begin the public hearing process, there will be the two readings and by that time we will know, um, there's another, there are another, a, a number of other issues that need to be handled with the overall development of the project. So this is just one of the steps of many that need to be taken, um, that we need to go through. So I can't answer the date question. I know that once you guys pass it a second reading, it'll be immediately effective. But hopefully the timing of that second reading will be when they're ready to pull the trigger on the overall site development.
I just wanted to ask one question because you keep saying second reading, but this says first and final.
First and final of the resolution. Okay. So this is just a resolution beginning the process. Then we, yes, and then we will bring you an ordinance.
Clear? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Mr. Mayorman, any items for executive session this evening?
That is all I have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I would suggest you close it now and let people figure out what they're going to do and let them call. I'm serious.
I know.
You got out through there.
I know.
Try and access the area down there without that strip.